Oh my goodness. It's warm.
What's up, Amy?
Get this out, I'm gonna call her scarred. Yeah. Mike, Mike needed. He didn't.
Oh, the appreciation, yay!
Still appreciate?
Yes, we appreciate it.
Woo! Cold. All right. Second. Good. Our executive session are adjourned at six thirty-two PM. No action taken during executive session. I would like to call to order the regular CSD board meeting for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty-seven PM. Thank you all for joining us this evening. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. If you're able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? Excellent. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Flies. May I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Davis, all in favor of approving the agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda for this evening is approved.
There are no minutes.
There are no minutes from the previous board meeting.
Forgot to, they didn't get attached.
Not attached, we will get those attached, approved, and uploaded for the February meeting. Our spotlight this evening is the team from Westchester. Welcome, Ms. Knox.
Pete.
And Pete.
Good evening, Chairman Hurdick, Superintendent Furman, CSD board members. I am Christine Knox, Principal of Westchester Elementary. Joining me tonight is Latonya Henry, Assistant Principal, Christie Manazzo, Instructional Coach, and Wanda Nesbit, our Westchester and CSD Teacher of the Year. I am honored to share with you the work that our incredible crew does for and with students. Westchester School champions every student as invaluable to our academic community and centers anti-racist, culturally responsive, transformational teaching for the advancement of agency, allyship, and equitable, excellent outcomes for all. This statement is a collective effort of our staff and our work this year has centered around taking these words from paper to practice. We are grounded in the work of the EL education framework and core practices. We view our work through the lens of equity for the educator, equity in curriculum instruction and assessment, and our equitable processes and procedures to support our student and staff recruitment. EL education is the framework that wraps around our work for children. Equity is the lens we use to examine our practices. We are a crew working as a team to sustain a learning community where everyone belongs. This year, we clarified our focus on what makes Westchester an incredible place to learn and work. The Westchester Way consists of five guiding principles and actions that are grounded in our EL framework through the lens of equity for each student. True and culturally responsive teaching are practices that create a safe and inclusive environment in which students and adults are seen, heard, and valued. Learning targets and text for understanding are high-leverage instructional practices that guide our teaching and learning for clarity and purpose, leading to equitable outcomes for each student. Goal setting and reflection are also key components of helping each student become the leader of their own learning. Starting in kindergarten and on up, our students are learning to reflect upon their learning. Our teachers provide guidance and time to think about how and what they can do to improve. We talk often about moving our students from dependent learners to independent learners. Westchester Way creates an inclusive learning environment and guides us from our teaching to the students. CREW is a daily meeting to support everyone's learning and growth. The structure of CREW makes time for students to build meaningful relationships, reflect on and monitor academic progress, and focus on shared CREW development. This is a time each morning that we build a shared understanding of the value of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Each month, there's a shared focus of stories of student learning activities. We have to be purposeful in teaching how to treat others. Teachers explicitly teach the behaviors and expectations of positive shared CREW development through shared texts, relationship-building activities, reflection, and goal setting during daily CREW meetings.
Right. I am lucky because I get to talk about the wonderful Miss Nesbit behind me. The changing of hearts and minds is one way to describe our work at Westchester. It was with great intention, we realigned the work of our school committees to bring equity to the forefront. When equity is the priority throughout, it becomes the responsibility of all staff, not just an equity team. We don't opt in, and we don't opt out. Ms. Wanda Nesbit has worked with the staff to dig deeper into... Know that part. Ms. Wanda Nesbit has worked with the staff to dig deeper into what equity looks like, uh, work, uh, equity work looks like at Westchester. While we can see it, we have to believe it. Ms. Nesbit leads with the mindset of when you know better, you do better. We continue to create mindset shifts within our building to ensure that our students leave us ready to contribute to a better world. As the great Renee Brown says, "We are not here to be right, we are here to get it right."
While it is true that our student body is not very racially diverse at Westchester, our equity work is largely about bringing experiences and opportunities to all children that intentionally teach the importance of diversity and inclusion by celebrating and sharing the experiences of all races and all cultures. Ms. Nations, who is our incredible media specialist, has intentionally... I am so sorry, I, um...
Popular.
Thank you. Ms. Nations, our incredible media specialist, has built a library collection for our students that offers diverse perspectives and experiences through the stories they tell. She also invited Ms. Vanessa Bradley Newton, an author and illustrator, who shared her book, Becoming Vanessa, which is a reflection of her experiences of being one of the only black children in her school and overcoming reading challenges. It was clear her love of humor and her incredible singing talent. They all provided a valuable educational experience for both young and old. It is vital for students to see themselves in the materials at our school as well as our students seeing others who may be different from them in the books we use. This builds an appreciation for differences and more importantly, an understanding that we are more similar than we are different. During our student-led conferences, Westchester proudly hosted our first Black History Month pop-up bookstore, a store that featured exclusively books that were written by black authors and illustrated by black illustrators that center the joy and resilience of the characters in those stories. Westchester is a school that welcomes opportunities to share family traditions. Here's an example of two of our second graders who are Asian-American students and their parents, together, free to decide about Chinese New Year. They were proud to share what the New Year celebration means to their families with our school on the morning announcements and in their classrooms. Ms. Rice, our music teacher, and her uncle brought the joy of music with a personal connection through a recent community circle. Mr. Rice is a jazz musician that was born in Trinidad and has traveled around the world playing music. Enjoy a short video of our community circle spotlight in about three.
One job, we will take your attention for a video, now.
Westchester's celebration of holy, the Indian Hindu celebration of light over darkness, was brought to us by a team led by Westchester parent, Ms. Sampani, and her son, Jaden, who is in our second grade. On Saturday, we celebrated spring. Children and adults joined in the fun of throwing colors at each other. Stories alive, stories are coming alive with the help of a DEF grant. Ms. Jeannie Renaud and Ms. Jamie Montgomery worked with students after school to write stories through a three-week after-school learning experience. Classroom teachers got in on the fun as well, and all students could write a story and place it in the story machine. These stories will be published as a collection of stories for the students. Ms. Renaud and a group of professional actors will perform some of the stories for the students at the end of this month. In the next video spotlight, we'd like to show you a few things about Westchester. The habits of scholarship, students as leaders of their own learning, community circle, student leadership, starting with the morning announcement, student-led conferences, and our bi-monthly community circles, and most importantly, the joy of being a part of the Westchester Wolf Pack.
Hi, I'm Latonya. I'm here to show you that button. And this is... This is the collaboration button, and this is the craftsmanship button. And this is the perseverance button! And, um, my favorite button is the perseverance button because with this energy, I persevere with the nature.
And this is my favorite button, the craftsmanship button. Yeah, I, I, when I look at the button, I say, maybe I need to work on... In fact, I might need to work on some of my letters form and write. And...
So when you visit Westchester, you will see these buttons all around the school with teachers, kids, even, even like, even all the teachers. They're in there. And they're in every classroom, so...
Everywhere.
CREW, not passengers, strengthened by acts of consequential service to others. That quote by Kurt Hahn, founder of Outward Bound, has inspired the EL education motto, "We are CREW." I stepped in to lead Westchester one year ago. The amazing staff, students, and community were already rowing together through the most challenging years of pandemic education. I was able to join in, grab an oar, and do my part. It is my hope that this spotlight shines a light on the incredible people and work that make Westchester Elementary the exceptional school that it has always been and strives to be each day. I would like to end with a thank you to the WE staff, students, and families. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Westchester CREW. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the public signed up to share the comments this evening?
Uh, yes, we have eleven people signed up.
Excellent. All right, I will...
Sorry, twelve.
Twelve, ooh, just in the wire, got it. This is shared every time. It's just a comment on public participation. It is included in the board policy manual, and members of the public acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience. The opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in before the public comment period begins, and in doing so will be asked to state their connection and to CSD and/or the City of Decatur. Without time for board's other business, public comment is limited to one hour or twenty speakers. The comment period may be extended for a specific amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers is three minutes. Person speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed at the board as a body, not individual members, at the chair's discretion. You may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers should not list complaints about a specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board will not allow abusive language, threats, comments, jeers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. However, a member of the admin team will follow up with person speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Furman, will you please call our first speaker?
Yes, first I'd like to call Preeti Jaggi.
Hello, I'm Preeti Jaggi. I'm a pediatrician and a resident of Decatur, and I have become very interested in the issue of climate change, which I think is going to be the really biggest issue that our kids are facing. So I brought a Westchester button today for healthy, kid, healthy, climate, healthy kids. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit today about electric buses and the possibility of electric buses improving children's health. There are a couple, I spent the last year doing a climate and health course, and learned a lot about air pollution that we don't really learn in medical school. And I wanted to point to you a couple of articles that could be helpful in just thinking about the importance of pollution and affecting our children's health. This is a study that was in JAMA, Journal of American Medical Association, in two thousand and one. It details what happened during the Olympics in nineteen ninety-six. During a two-week period, driving was severely decreased because of the Olympics, and pediatric asthma rates also fell to forty percent. So we have an opportunity to decrease particulate matter pollution especially, and it really does affect children's health, even for those children that don't have asthma. It is associated with poorer lung function, how much air you can expel in a, in a second. So that's a really important thing to consider, as well as this study that was done by one of my colleagues, which looked at geospatial analyses of children that come from life-threatening asthma. And we see that children that live near major, major roadways, that are near the airport, they actually have higher rates of life-threatening asthma. When we think about electric buses, that is a Georgia drawdown pollution. We can get electrified vehicles, we can decrease particulate matter pollution, and we can improve the health of children. I know that there are lots of logistics to come with buses, cost, infrastructure, writing grants, it can be a little bit of a pain, but it is really, really helpful to keep our children healthy. We want kids at school and breathing to their utmost capacity so that they can learn and they can exercise and they can have a wonderful life.
Thank you. But next up is Laura Bowman. Oh. All right, next up then is Emily Beard.
Good evening. My name is Emily Beard. My husband and I have lived here in the city of Decatur since two thousand and six. Our kids have both started out in city schools of Decatur, but starting next year, neither of them will be here in the city schools. I recently had the opportunity to meet with the DeKalb County delegation at the Capitol with the state legislature legislators who represent DeKalb, including the city of Decatur. I was really disappointed to learn from them that out of all of you, only one of our leaders had come, taken the initiative to reach out to them. I was concerned when I heard that y'all had to be summoned to the delegation meeting in order to be, to meet with this group, that three-quarters of whose signatures are required for bills regarding things like the senior tech exemption, annexation, and other legislation, all very germane to the success and stability of the school system. Feel like this is a really glaring example of family leadership. Over the last year, I've made public comments several times and been joined by many other parents, the CSD parents, uh, children, sorry, with learning disabilities. One positive outcome from our advocacy is the establishment of a dyslexia task force. That group will be making formal recommendations to the board in day, and while this group's work is a step in the right direction, it is just the tiniest of baby steps in what will be a long road to get the school system where, where it needs to be. At the same time, she announced that creation of the Dyslexia Task Force, the superintendent also announced that we would have an MTSS task force, that CSD would form this, and I'm very disappointed to say that so far, this essential part of needed reform has not been initiated. The unfulfilled promise of CSD's tradition, this continues, in my opinion, of CSD's tradition of providing lip service, but not enough meaningful action for our struggling students. Decatur is a resource-rich district. Outcome status should reflect equitable learning for all students, but it doesn't. CSD continues to tell a biased story when it comes to reading outcomes, when our district leader claims reading proficiency is the best in the state, as, as the chair did recently in the recent state of City address. They do a disservice, disservice to our community, not to mention disregard the many students who have left the system. By cherry-picking the good data elements to celebrate, does not acknowledge the appalling opportunity gap that exists here and denies the lived experience of many economically disadvantaged, particularly, I'm sorry, economically disadvantaged black students. It does not capture the reality that only twenty-two percent of our economically disadvantaged students are proficient or above in reading, and that only thirty-two percent of black students are reading proficiently or above. As Georgia Board of Education data, and that's from the Milestones data from twenty-one and twenty-two, in Georgia, the Georgia Board of Education data for economically disadvantaged third-grade outcomes and reading, this includes all of metro districts, the city, schools of Decatur, economically disadvantaged students are underperforming the regional trend line. Given how small our percentage of economically disadvantaged students is and how small it's getting every year, this should be a positive outlier, far above the trend line. By comparison, Springdale Park, which is just a few miles down the road on Hunt in APS, they're serving a very similar percentage of E D, economically disadvantaged students as we are, but they are far above the trend line with sixty-seven percent reading proficiency. So Todd Collins from the California Reading Coalition states, "We simply can't call ourselves a great school district and mostly make great results for the most challenged and least resourced students. In Decatur, we are resource-rich and practice poor." It's time for the CSD Tier One Arts Core Reading Curriculum to be chucked right out into the trash can where it belongs. If, if we want our students to get, our failing students to get ahead here and not rely on the current practice, which is turning the job over to Orton-Gillingham tutors and private schools to supplement reading instruction, the first step should be to replace debunked reading curriculum with one that is evidence-based and aligned to the science. City Schools of Decatur continues to trail behind other metro districts whose leadership has embraced this change. Many other city schools just invested seven million dollars in evidence-based structured literacy instruction. So... Okay. I'm sorry, can I finish?
Sure.
Okay. Everyone in this town knows countless stories of parents attempting to give their kids who are struggling support and being told that the kids aren't failing enough. So this, I feel like if the Board of Education wants to turn this literacy story around, we have to improve our tiered intervention and improve compliance with state and federal guidance for delivering special education services. That MTSS task force needs to form with urgency.
Thank you.
Next up, Tanya Coventry-Straider. Did I say that right? I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Coventry-Straider. I'm the Executive Director of Mothers and Others for Clean Air. Our mission is to protect children's health and well-being by educating the public about the impacts of air pollution and advocating climate action. Preeti Jaggi and I work together in this mission. I'm also a graduate of City Schools of Decatur, and my daughter is currently a senior. I'm here today because I care deeply about our children and this community. We have always been able to come together to make good things happen, and I'm super proud of Decatur City Sustainability Plan and our goal to reach zero carbon by twenty thirty-five. I'm really sincerely hoping that the school board will also join Decatur City plan to be stable and zero carbon by twenty thirty-five. When I learn from friends like Preeti, Dr. Jaggi, when I learn that children riding on a diesel school bus breathes four times as much pollution as those outside the bus, knowing all of the issues with the pollution that comes from diesel buses on our children's health, I knew I had to do something. I met with Dr. Perez today, here at the City Schools of Decatur, to speak with him about CSD's sustainability plan and to encourage him to once again apply for any EPA grants and other federal fundings available for that transition school buses. And really encourage him to look into transitioning that fleet of twelve diesel school buses that we still have here to clean energy. Not only did I learn that CSD's transportation team is working to find ways to replace those dirty diesel buses, but they're doing so much more. We have solar power and electric chargers and a new water... All in the works. I was very relieved and encouraged by what Dr. Perez told me. The only time I've been more proud of City Schools of Decatur's efforts in an area was when President Obama was here to visit when my daughter was in pre-teen. I just want to thank all of you and Dr. Perez and his team, and encourage you to keep up the good work in transitioning City Schools of Decatur to clean energy, and also offer my help. I'm a part of many community organizations, we're all trying to understand and translate all the federal funding that's coming down, and I'd like to continue to meet with members of City Schools of Decatur to see how we can help the community transition. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Stacy Buckley.
Hello all, I'm Stacy Buckley, and I've been a Decatur resident since two thousand and one, and I currently have two children in the school district, one at middle school and one at the high school. This past December incident, for lack of a better way to refer to it, me, it stemmed from two key problems. The first is a lack of classroom decorum guidelines, and the second was the lack of process to follow when and if an incident occurred. Had guidelines and processes been in place, we wouldn't be here today. Full stop. But, point is, even though I'm a white woman, I think it's... But the point is, even though I'm a white woman, I think it's safe to say that this became an even bigger issue because our neighbors of color are so tired of feeling like they're not being seen or heard. Word letter to the community even said that the investigation determined that the City Schools of Decatur has a longstanding history of equity-related challenges. At the risk of sounding split, I don't think we needed to pay an outside organization to learn that. We know that, we have known that for quite some time. What's frustrating to me is that we give a lot of lip service, a lot of performative communication, stressing anguish and sadness and trauma, but then we don't really fix anything. Spend a lot of time and money looking like we're doing something until the next big drama flares and we're right back where we started again. In this case, we don't know what the consultants marching orders were, what the deliverables were supposed to be, what the cost was, where those funds came from. As a community, we deserve to know. What we do know is that the recommendation looks like it wants to spend a lot of money on more administrators, on more consultants, at who knows what costs, but it doesn't sound trivial. And worse, there doesn't seem to be a clear charge or distinct measures of success tied in with those new recommended decisions. Given that we are a district that keeps looking for ways to cut, testing at the high school, overcrowded classrooms are some things that come to mind, this does not sit well with me. I know you're reviewing the policies. To me, it's imperative that you do that in a way that makes the standards clear, reporting of breaches obvious, and the consequences clearly outlined. They don't need to be made longer and more complicated, they need to be simplified and made obvious. I recognize that's a tall order, but your charge as our board should be to ensure that that happens. Before we hire another admin person or spend another dollar, we absolutely must do that, or we'll be right back in this position, but with an even more bloated administrative load. Once we clear up those policies, I think the next step ought to be to examine our priorities as a school district and ensure any administrator has in his or her responsibilities only things which support those priorities with measurement. Hard choices will have to be made, but we need to clean up our policies and our job roles before we start adding more to the payroll. We can't fix these systemic problems by just throwing more people at it.
Uh, next up is Debbie Lester.
Evening. My name is Debbie Lester. I am an early intervention teacher here in CSD. I've been teaching nearly 25 years, with 20 of those years in Decatur. I also have a sixth grader, Beacon Hill, who is thriving due to the dedication from amazing teachers put in each and every day. But today, I'm not here to speak for myself. I am here speaking on behalf of a number of CSD teachers who collectively have hundreds of years of experience, if not thousands. These teachers share their thoughts with me, but do not feel comfortable sharing in this forum due to a number of reasons. We are worried. We are worried about our students, we are worried about our teachers, and we are worried about our district as a whole. To begin with, we are concerned that returning from the pandemic last time has essentially been met with a business re-usual approach from the district. Students have returned with acute and urgent needs, not only with academics, but in the areas of social, emotional learning as well. We are concerned that no real pause or time to reset was given to children already traumatized by a year or more at home. In our opinion, a golden opportunity was missed to address the needs of our students. Instead of things moving slower, students and teachers have been struggling to keep up with the pacing of curriculums that lend little to no flexibility to reteach difficult concepts. Assessments are frequent and lengthy. In addition, poorly timed rollouts from the district with new curriculums and a non-user-friendly grading system has been incredibly stressful for teachers. Let me emphasize without a doubt that our school leadership is strong, but our administration is being asked to deliver and reinforce unreasonable expectations for students and teachers alike. As an intervention, I can see these struggles our students face on a daily basis compared to years past. Teachers are stretched thin with messed up classes, subs are often not available, if at all. There was a time not long ago when CSD's motto was, "Whatever it takes." And time and again, our school steps up the challenge. It now feels less like "whatever it takes" and more like, "which box should I check?" That is not okay for kids. We're talented and still professionals at Wilson, we are concerned that there is none of urgency in response to the needs of students and teachers. Seems to be a good connect from what is really going on with our children, because they do not see and feel what's happening in our schools on a daily basis, but our kids live it, our teachers live it, and our staff lives it, we know. In short, students and teachers are being asked to do more with less. While we certainly cannot speak to the ins and outs of everything at the district office, the perception is they continue to get additional hires for support while our schools are increasingly getting less. We invite members of the board to come to our schools without cameras or footboards and show up for us all. Stay awhile, listen, observe, take the time, real time, to talk to teachers and reflect on their feedback. No more will get back to you, no more will think about it, will let you know. Trust the teachers, they are here for the kids every day. We need more, our kids deserve it. Thank you.
Next up is Eleanor Ball.
Good evening, my name is Eleanor Ball. I have lived in Decatur for 21 years. I've taught in the community as a special education teacher for 10 years. I currently have three of my own children here in the system. While I'm proud of the work I see happening in CSD and of the incredible learning that my students have experienced in my time working in this district, I do have serious concerns about the direction City Schools of Decatur is moving. Throughout my years in Decatur, I've seen a number of changes and quick rollouts of curriculum, but recently, the consistency and time for quality differentiation has become increasingly difficult. In my early years, I taught in a larger system. I chose to come to CSD because I saw this district valued their teachers and respected their level of knowledge as well as encouraged autonomy. I was even willing to take a pay decrease as a, I was excited to be trusted, to use my talents to truly engage children in their learning. While I expected some changes as a result of the pandemic, I've been concerned that the workload and the number of assessments first students have increased, while the level of social, emotional support has decreased. The pacing and unreasonable expectations of the curriculum designed to catch kids up, as well as the excessive number of assessments, makes it literally impossible to provide true differentiation and instruction on levels that these children deserve. They not only deserve it, but by law, it is required. These district common assessments and assignments within the curriculum are lengthy and often require days for my special ed students to complete in one subject alone, taking time away from other students' needs. Our school works very hard to roll out what is required from the district, but it has become increasingly difficult to ensure that the rollouts coming from the district are in line with the needs of all students. As the pacing often changes and does not allow flexibility for reteaching concepts, which is an essential component for students with special learning needs. In addition, the class sizes of 25 have made it even harder for the general education teachers to equitably support their students, especially those classes that do not have full-time support or are professionals. In closing, I ask the board to consider working to ensure that CSD is a system that values and trusts teachers, puts supports in place for real differentiation with actual people to provide it, and takes the time to gather and honor real feedback from teachers about what we need with the curriculum. I invite all board members and district staff to come spend a whole day in my classroom, not a 10-minute walkthrough, not a photo op, actually spend the day to see how decisions made at the district level really and truly affect the students that we are here for.
Next up is Beverly Byer.
My name is Beverly Byer. I stand before you today as a longtime member of this community, a teacher of 17 years in this district, and the TAC representative for Beacon Hill Middle School. I'm here to represent the voices of my colleagues, educators giving their all every single day to serve the children of our community. We are tired. We're tired of feeling, we're tired of feeling as though our voices don't matter. We keep repeating the same concerns to no avail when nothing changes. We need you to listen. Teacher committees were formed last school year to evaluate our grading system and discuss next steps to ensure students are served and assessed equitably and fairly. After many hours of discussing, analyzing, researching best practices, teachers put forth a suggested path forward. No one listened. Instead, it was decided that we would switch. Notice I didn't use the word "transition" because that implies we were given time to adequately prepare for this change, standard-based grading the very next school year. There's no time allotted to adjust our current summits and rubrics to this grading system before implementation. Nope, we were to make those adjustments while we're also planning lessons, teaching our classes, attending meetings, et cetera. Not only were we not given the time to prepare, this new platform for grading wasn't even up and running when our school year started. This system continues to cause issues each grading period, causing teachers a tremendous amount of stress and anxiety. Teachers cannot catch up. A colleague of mine shared today a teacher of 20-plus years that she is exhausted and overwhelmed with the number of grades she's required to input into her system. ELA and math teachers at EHMS will be required to put in over 2,000 grades between now and the end of the school year. If a teacher of 20-plus years can't stay on top of this insurmountable number, think about a new teacher. We cannot continue to expect superhuman feats of our teachers and think that we will just find a way because we always do. I can't even begin to get into the fallacy of using mode as a measure of achievement for our students. Listen to your teachers, we're the ones in the classrooms and we're telling you this cannot continue. The other topic that continues to impact teacher morale and lead to burnout is the lack of substitute teachers in our district. This has been an ongoing problem, and the only solution that seems to be settled upon is to have classroom teachers cover during our planning period. Cannot be the solution. Our planning periods are an essential component to serving our students. We use this time to meet with content teams to plan engaging lessons, assess the needs of our students, meet with parents, and many other things. Teachers are missing important discussions about how to support our students who are struggling with enrichment opportunities because we have to cover a class because there's no sub. System has to figure it out. If a substitute is able to make $45 or $50 more in a district down the road, that's where they're going to go. We can't assume that Decatur has some magical allure that overrides earning money to pay the bills. We have to make our substitute pay competitive. I may stand here this evening as one teacher, but I assure you, standing with me are the vast majority of educators in this district.
Next up is Deliana Costova.
So my name is Deliana Costova. I'm a almost twenty-year resident of Decatur, and I have a kid in middle school and a kid in high school. And this is my first board meeting, so thank you for your patience. But the first thing I want to say also is, what I want to talk with you is a little bit connected to what I heard right now from several teachers. And more concretely, the reason that I'm here today is to raise concerns about the proposal for two ancillary hires, the same from the recommendation served for by Dr. Rupen. And this is a strictly financial concern because the cost of these hires over, let's say, five years would probably exceed a million dollars, and it would be a permanent cost. It's not a one-time consulting contract, it's a year after year budget item. I'm hearing about those deficiencies that we're facing as a school district for substitutes, for special education, poor, five or four families struggling for their kids, teachers struggling, drowning, the people in the trenches in that school are drowning. This is not, in my opinion, justified. And I am not speaking just for myself, but I have talked to many of my fellow parents, neighbors, absolutely on the same page. This is throughout the district the concern. Now, the reason that I'm bringing this to the board is that the main task or the key objective for the board is financial stewardship, and that means due diligence in budgetary decisions. And so when, I don't see due diligence being done here, because due diligence would have considered what does the current expansion, our current equity team is, how much the increase would add, and what is the marginal value added of these two positions? That, I have not seen that happen, that superstition. Then if you have available funds that exceed over a million dollars over five years, these funds can be spent so much more efficiently on equity concerns. My child's teacher, the best teacher that he had at Westchester, she left Westchester because of higher salaries she could get at that latter public school. And she was the best African-American teacher we would have, and these people, capable people are leaving. This directly, this expansion directly contradicts the main equity goals that have been exposed in the, by the board, by taking funds away. So I would support teacher bonuses, improve teacher compensation, including, given the added responsibilities, maybe give bonus subsidies and support staff, cafeteria workers where equity would matter. But two ancillary hires with unclear responsibilities would be a strain on the budget, and I do not see those as justified. Okay, so my other concern, and this is, I am on concern here, is that as an addition factor, decreasing equity goals or resources for equity goals that could be truly appreciated in the community, this is a permanent decision, and we know superintendent is not a permanent position, it's a lax position, this is a permanent decision, huge budgetary impact. So that is also has to be taken into account.
Next up is Cindy Jackie.
Jackie, I have lived in the city of Decatur with my family for 15 years, and I have a child at Decatur High School. Can you hear me okay? I am here to draw attention to the fact that this board meeting today is occurring at a critical point in time for our school district. The entire community is now looking to the school board for leadership and fidelity. All eyes are on you now to see what you will do. Will you continue the CSD status quo and watch as the district becomes a less and less welcoming place for people of color, disability, learning differences? Will CSD become a district in decline, one that just can't seem to get its act together around equity, in spite of the very large property tax revenues received, the smart, hard-working, amazing teachers and staff, and the intelligent, thoughtful community that supports you? Or will you decide at this time to say what you do and do what you say, stated differently, act with integrity? Will our future selves look back and see that as a result of the conversations had and decisions made today, our district has become an action-oriented and transparent district, keeping promises made, staff with top administrators who know how to achieve stated goals in an effective and inclusive way? Will we have become a district who achieves continuous improvement and has actually built a culture that is truly inclusive and welcoming to all? Because the culture that exists in our district today is one that empowered a classroom teacher to use the N-word in his classroom in front of his students with no fear of the consequences. You have a huge opportunity to effect positive change right now with the impending announcement of a permanent superintendent. Selecting a superintendent is one of the most important things you will do during your tenure on the school board. I hope you will select a candidate capable of fitting to the core of issues and correcting them. Issues such as why, when we have policies and procedures in place, community resources ready to assist, an equity plan, and an equity department run by very smart people? Do we continue to have racist events occur in our system? And why do we continue to handle them poorly? It has been two months since the teacher used a racial slur in his classroom, and we still do not have a decision on what his final decision will be. This is harmful to our students, most especially those you have indicated you endeavor to protect the harm most. And it is a distraction that takes us further away from doing the work to meet our stated anti-racism and student performance goals. ready to assist, an equity plan, and an equity department run by very smart people? Do we continue to have racist events occur in our system? And why do we continue to handle them poorly? It has been two months since a teacher used a racial slur in his classroom and we still do not have a decision on what his final decision will be. This is harmful to our students, most especially those you have indicated you endeavor to protect the harm most. And it is a distraction that takes us further away from doing the work to meet our stated anti-racism and student performance goals. I hope you will empower the permanent superintendent to make substantial changes, excuse me, in order to accomplish CSD's stated goal of being a school community that values equity and stamps out racism. And I hope you will provide the superintendent with all necessary resources in order to accomplish this task. And I lastly hope you will inject strong accountability into the process. Closing, you are the top level of authority and accountability in this school district. Community is counting on you to fix the complex, high-level failures that have gotten us to where we are today.
Next up is Kristin Dennean.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Dennean. I've lived in Oakhurst for nineteen years. I have a seventh grader at middle school and I have a tenth grader in the high school. They've both been in CSDs as college heights, so yay CSD. I am speaking here today in my private capacity, but I think it's important for you all to understand what I do for a living because it provides context to my comments. I've worked in local government and staffed public meetings just like this one for twenty-two years. Currently, I'm the Chief Transparency Officer for the City of Atlanta. I've been in that role for three years. Before that, I was an attorney in Atlanta's Law Department, started in two thousand and one, and one of my practice, primary practice areas was open government law compliance. So I know firsthand how community goodwill and trust are crucial for a public agency. And I know what it feels like to work in a place that doesn't have that. When you have them, you can do transformative things, important things. When you don't, even the simplest task becomes really difficult and hard things become almost impossible because you can't get people to go with you. Right now, you all are losing community goodwill and trust. And in part, it's because all of you, the board, central office, the staff, are not communicating effectively with your community. And ineffective communications are worse than no communications at all. At the district level, you undercommunicate and overcommunicate at the same time. Our main source of regular information are multiple overlapping, yet non-identical, weekly email newsletters. Important district information is lost amid recognition and routine school announcements, which are important, but not the same level of importance. We have a lot of public meetings and that's fantastic, but they're hardly advertised. There are no, there are very few reminders. Some of their schedules overlap with each other or with other important school activities or events. And the important information that gets talked about in those meetings is rarely disseminated formally, except for by word of mouth by the people who were there. Direct communications from the district level are infrequent and when we get them, they're data dumps. It's just piles of information. They're too long, they don't synthesize, they don't provide context, they don't explain. Or there are apologies for communication mistakes. It should not take a forensic analysis of newsletters and a crowdsourcing of discussions and public meetings to stay informed about what's happening in our school district. Our community is interested. It's hard to follow what's going on. It is part of your job, all of your jobs, to know your constituents, anticipate what people want to know and what they need to hear, and provide that information upfront in a clear way that people can understand and access in very, in different ways. Not everybody has electronic access. Everybody's not on email. When people have unanswered questions, they will fill in the blanks themselves, often inaccurately. And once people make inaccurate conclusions, it is very hard to undo those. So rarely assume that everything is great if they don't know what's happening. The assumption is usually that someone is incompetent or that someone is actively trying to conceal something. That's not usually what the case is, but that's where people go. And once people have had to ask for basic information, you have already lost. They shouldn't have to ask. You should anticipate what they want to know. Right now, a growing portion of our community feels ignored, excluded from decision-making. Whether or not that's actually the case, that's how they feel. Inadequate communication both causes and multiplies this feeling. We need district-level communication strategy, not just the new comm director, so that effective communication is a foundational component of all of our processes and every new initiative and not just the box that we tick at the end to announce an outcome. This district has a lot of important matters that need attention. We have real issues with equity and student achievement, among other things that have been discussed today, and you all are.
Next up is Tom DeSimone.
Dear board members and Dr. Furman, I want to begin my comments by first thanking you all for the work that you do for the City Schools of Decatur. I recognize that serving as a school board member is often a time-consuming, labor-intensive, exhausting, and thankless task, but one that's also vital to the functioning of an effective, efficient, and inclusive school district. I'm sure that you all take your position seriously and are constantly striving to achieve those objectives and to contribute to a successful environment where all of our children can learn, grow, and feel accepted and safe. I'd like to introduce myself and my relationship to the City Schools of Decatur. My name is Tom DeSimone and I have two children at our school district who have been students here since they were fortunate enough to be selected to enroll in college heights. The City Schools of Decatur is enrollment, I'm sorry, the City Schools of Decatur is all my children have known when it comes to their public school education. My son will be enrolling in Decatur High School next year. My daughter will be following him the year after that. To buy more background about myself, I've served as the chairman of the Winona Park School Leadership Team, where I had the privilege of working alongside some excellent educators and administrators, including Dr. Furman. I was also a co-founder and co-president of the Tally Street PTO for three years. I also regularly volunteer as a judge for the Beacon Hill Debate Team. In addition to the roles that I have served as an SOT and PTO member, I also ran for a position on this Board of Education back in two thousand and fifteen. I mention this because at one point as candidates, we were asked by Decaturish whether we would commit to a culture of transparency. Of course, all the candidates indicated that they would, but the board often struggled to live up to that commitment. One such example of this failure to operate transparently involved a situation related to a previous superintendent. It was alleged that Dr. Dooty was absent and unreachable for weeks at a time during the summer and did not utilize his vacation days. He would then exchange his unused vacation days in lieu of a cash payout at the end of the year, even though that vacation time should have been exhausted during his absences. This led to an internal investigation, which resulted in Dr. Dooty's resignation. At the time of his departure, it was unclear what, if anything, Dr. Dooty had done wrong because the results of the investigation were not made public. Instead, the board relied upon oral assurances from the investigators, which they then relayed to the community. Accordingly, we never resolved the issue of what, if any, wrongdoing occurred when our superintendent cashed in hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of vacation time that he may not have been entitled to. Any further inquiries about the report generated by the investigation were shielded by claims of attorney-client privilege. It's important to note that the client always has the right to waive this privilege and as a board with a stated commitment to transparency, these findings should have been made public. But to this day, they have not been, so all we can do is speculate about what actually happened. Most recently, the school has made a series of decisions that were poorly communicated and not subject to community review and input. As an example, all schools below the high school level recently switched from average to mobile grading. To this day, I am unsure of the rationale behind this decision. If this isn't allegedly superior system of grading, then it's not clear why we revert back to the average grading at high school level. A community-wide communication confirming the adoption of this system, as well as the rationale for doing so, would have been helpful, but it provides yet another missed opportunity for the board to operate in a transparent manner. We've also recently been told that testing fees for AP courses and PSATs will soon be shifted to our students, despite the fact that City of Decatur residents face some of the highest property taxes in the state of Georgia, the vast majority of which are dedicated to funding our public school. Which brings me to the board's handling of the latest incident that has occurred at our high school. I'm going to assume that we're all familiar with the details of the incident. I think we can all agree that there is really no reason for any white person to ever use that word and doing so is almost always harmful and traumatizing for any person of color who hears it uttered in their presence due to its ugly history. However, the manner in which this board and the superintendent have dealt with this incident is problematic in a number of ways. I don't think anyone disputes that the teacher involved in the incident should have been suspended and trained on the appropriate way to handle such an encounter in the future. If it hasn't done so already, the board should probably adopt a zero-tolerance policy where any student who utters a racial slur in a classroom should be suspended and a teacher doing the same should also be automatically suspended and based on the circumstances potentially terminated. With that said, it's unclear to me why the board has decided to engage multiple outside consultants to advise, for advice on this issue, when we already have the fully-staffed Equity and Student Services Group that the board should be able to consult with, along with the other members of the administrative staff such as HR.
Tom, I need, well over. Quickly.
It's unclear to me how we suddenly appear to have unlimited financial resources at our disposal to address the issue. I think it's important that all students, no matter their race, ethnic, or economic status, should feel safe, welcome, and supported in this school district. But in an environment where we have access to limited financial resources that already appear to be strained, how can we justify spending what will likely exceed a hundred thousand or more in consulting fees and staff salary and benefits? Why not lean on our expertise and common sense solutions? To the extent that our staff members don't have expertise to address incidents like these in the future, we should be providing the training necessary for them to do that instead of incurring a substantial expense of hiring more full-time staff. In the interest of transparency, I would suggest that the board provide the community with a full accounting of payments already made to outside consultants such as Portland Butts and Dr. Kwan Wilson. And to the extent that the board intends to adopt the recommendations proposed by Dr. Wilson in the district-wide letter from the board, it should provide a projected budget accompanied by an explanation of where in the current budget these resources will be diverted from. The school district needs to adopt a rapid, transparent, and effective policy when it comes to addressing incidents of racism. But spending untold amounts of money on outside consultants and adding to administrative blow seems to be an inefficient way to achieve that goal. Last, talented teachers and administrators are the lifeblood of this district and I'm sure they are watching, so I'd like to end my comments by posing this question to the board. If you were a teacher and administrator looking for a new position, would you consider City Schools of Decatur? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you to all members of the CSD community for sharing your comments this evening. Say her anymore?
Oh, that was it.
Okay. At this time, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman to share the superintendent's comments this evening.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. I do have some comments of the chair. Wasn't ready for that transition. Give me a second. My report, I'd like to share some great things that are happening in the district. First, I'd like to say that Decatur High School was named a 2023 AP Honor School by our state superintendent. My school was named this by Richard Woods in multiple categories, AP STEM, AP School of Distinction, AP Expansion School. To qualify, a school must have students testing in at least four AP STEM courses. To be named an AP School of Distinction, they must have at least twenty percent of the total population taking the dam, fifty percent. And it's based on growth in AP student participation from 2021 to 2022. Way to go Bulldogs, way to go teachers. DHS placed third in the All-State Chorus. It's a statewide choral event at the Classical Center in Athens, Georgia. The top students in the state are chosen through audition. We placed third. Thirty-five of our students made All-State. Beacon Hill had thirteen make All-State. Way to go Bulldogs. The orchestra record for, recorded for Despicable Me Four at the Universal Studios. So over winter break, the BHMS and Decatur High School Orchestra traveled to Orlando and they participated in the sound design workshop hosted by Universal Studios and they performed and recorded part of the backing music for the movie Despicable Me Four. What an honor. The nurses collaborated with American Medical Response Incorporated. On February seventh, nurse supervisor Shonda Moore, Claremont School Nurse Chanel Huff Cox witnessed how FTO Quincy Macklemore of the American Medical Response Inc. Actions helped improve the outcome of an emergency situation for a family at Claremont. Mr. Macklemore's calm, friendly, and professional demeanor was reassuring and established trust with the family, took additional time to educate the nurses on importance of calling emergency response, and on a new device, the Lucas CPR, provided brief in-service using the device and shared the advantages of having it. It is evident that Mr. FTO Macklemore is proud of his work in the community. We are so grateful for the nurses, all they have done over the last two years in particular. YLOE and Gents had a career symposium at Beacon Hill Middle. They hosted it on February twenty-third to the twenty-fourth. It gathered African-American professionals from across Georgia to educate our students about careers in academia, industry, communications, business, and beyond. The speakers shared their experiences to inspire and motivate students to persevere to achieve their career goals. Students better understood how they can fit into the world and create the positive change they want to see. Fave hosted the. Shout-out to Malik Moreau and Anita Robinson. They coordinated a luncheon that celebrated food from across the African diaspora. The event was called The Taste of Soul, had twenty different dishes featured. Ms. Moreau and Ms. Robinson hosted and decorated this amazing event. Way to go Falcons. FCC LA students are heading to our state leadership conference. Before the February break, twelve students competed. Nine qualifying teams move on to compete at the state leadership conference in March. The goal is to make the national leadership conference will take place in Denver, Colorado over the summer. Beacon Hill students placed on the National German Exam. Congratulations specifically to seventh graders Calla Lockwood, Charlotte Kemper, and M. Eastman on being awarded the gold medal. And seventh grade Ivy Arnold and the eighth grader Ellie Green silver medals as special recognition on the Level Two National German Exam Honor Roll for outstanding performance. Over twelve thousand three hundred students participated from all regions of the U.S. It's a huge accomplishment for our students and speaks to the amazing work of their teacher, Ms. Jennifer McNulty, and the work of our German department. DHS student Lily May Barsik, B-A-R-C-I-K, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, was awarded prestigious National Honor Society Scholarship. Congratulations Lily on being selected as a semifinalist. Lily May is the first member to earn this recognition since Decatur High School's NIH HS chapter was chartered in nineteen fifty-three. She's on leadership, activism, commitment to clean energy, environmental justice, and education highlighted her resume. She's also co-president of the Garden Club, active with the Sierra Club. She's a member, a high school member in the City of Decatur and City Schools of Decatur's Strategic Planning Group and tutors some math on the side. Way to go Lily May, incredibly proud of you. National School Social Workers Week was March fifth to the eleventh, if you missed it. School social workers are confronted with challenges, heightened anxieties, and anticipated difficulties. Social workers face these challenges with absolute strength and resilience. Our social workers are such an invaluable part of CSD. We're thankful for the impact that your work has on our students, our families, and our community. National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is in March and it's an observance to raise awareness about the inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all areas of community life. The goal of the month is to bring awareness to success stories of people with developmental disabilities. We're so excited our schools are highlighting this inclusiveness this month. In the sports world, the Decatur High School's inaugural gymnastics team placed first. Congratulations on their first meet and way to go Bulldogs. National School Breakfast Week was at Tally. Students and staff at Tally were cautioned that the meals would be extra delicious this week by the staff. Everyone enjoyed it. Way to go Tally Nutrition Team. The band and orchestra received all superiors at Beacon Hill. Congratulations to the seventh and eighth graders. Of tone quality, intonation, technique, accuracy, balance, and musicality. If you see the seventh, eighth grade orchestra students or their staff, please congratulate them for being recognized at the highest possible level. And the advanced acting students installed the Holocaust Memorial at Decatur High School. They performed the play Letters to Salaah in October of last year. During the run, the students raised a thousand dollars for the American Jewish Joint Distribution Committee. Since their performance, the students have attended Mr. Greenblatt's Bearing Witness at the Bremen Museum. They were honored for their work. In conjunction, the students brought the show back in January for a one-night performance. All the proceeds were then dedicated to restoration of the memorial to the six million at the Greenwood Cemetery. Today, they worked with Mr. Greenblatt and Bremen Museum to install a daffodil garden in remembrance of all of the children who lost their lives during the Holocaust. Great job Bulldogs. Finally, I wanted to share a little bit of information that's personally important to me. me. As a former teacher myself, something that always happens in our board conversations is how can we raise the rates? How can we get more money towards teachers and that sort of stuff? And there was a couple of questions asked about it, and I kind of broke it down this way, and I'll share this all in the charts reports. But at Glenwood Elementary, so if you just learned there, the average salary since 2020 has gone up 18%. That included a $3,000 salary adjustment in 2020, a $2,000 in 2021, a 1% col in 2022, a $2,000 in this year. Additionally, all the staff increases were fully funded, and similar numbers for classified staff. The problem with saying that out loud is someone may interpret it as our teachers are making enough money. That is not accurate. They are the most underpaid group of people in our country, in my humble...
We are trying. We are...
Working. There have been increases, and they will continue to be the priority of this board as we adjust salaries. Classified salaries had 2%, 2%, 1% increases in their salary as well over the last four years. Coming out of COVID has been no easy step whatsoever, and I wanted to share that. I also was going to share, but Dr. Furman will later, just some numbers about the student-to-teacher ratio in the classrooms, because that's something that's incredibly important to the board that we ask for reports on, and I look forward to hearing that. Those are all of my comments for the evening. We now move to consent items, which include the personnel report, school nutrition, monthly financial report, legacy park track and field design, tally upper backfield renovation. May I have a motion to approve consent items one through five?
Motion. Go ahead. I move to approve consent items, agenda items one through five.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items one through five are approved. This month, the board was provided copies of school improvement plans as informational only. You can find those in the packet. The board has several action and discussion items on the agenda for this evening. Dr. Furman, would you please present an action item at this time?
Yeah, first, the first action item for this evening is approval of Board Policy G A G C, which is the employee ethics, AKA our whistleblower policy.
Thank you for including that. May I have a motion to approve the Board Policy G A G C employee ethics?
To approve Board Policy G A G C ethics.
Excellent. May I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. The Board Policy G A G C employee ethics is approved. Our next discussion and action item is CSD's Community Inspired Student Center Equity-Focused Strategic Plan. Dr. Furman?
Yes, we did switch the agenda. I'm going to do the strategic plan, and then we'll do the budget.
Okay.
If I may, I just wanted to make very, very clear that the employee ethics policy that we just passed was the whistleblower policy.
Yes, exactly.
So that teachers and everyone understand that that is what just was passed.
Please. All right, well, thank you for being here this evening. I presented this draft plan to the board at the work session just last week. I believe that was just a week ago. So I'm excited to share this plan again. I've added a couple, I got some feedback from some community members on a couple of things that they thought I should add, so I did add a couple of things, just so the more detail can be present as we move through this presentation. So, as I said, I'm excited to launch our new plan. Our theme for this plan is that we are all in Decatur. This plan was very community-inspired. We spent a lot of time gathering input from the community, addressing our strengths, our weaknesses, opportunities, and potential threats for our plan. This plan encompasses and it impacts everyone in our community. Its successful execution will require everyone in our community to lead, to teach, and to learn. So I'm thrilled to introduce our new plan. This is a plan that will bring out the best in our students, educators, families, and city through outstanding and inclusive public education. This plan provides CSD with a clear focus on students as we confront and overcome racial, economic, social injustices, and disparities. The bottom line is that this plan will ensure CSD meets the needs of all of our students. If you don't remember anything else about this plan, we want you to know that first, this plan centers, re-centers us on students, and not just students, but the whole student development, the development of their social, emotional, cognitive development. Second, that we are weaving equity into the fabric of what we do across the district. Equity will no longer be a standalone initiative. Third, we are reimagining what schools can look like to meet the needs of all learners. Think of how we could possibly change the way the school looks, providing opportunities for internships, and a laser focus on making sure every student is a skilled reader by the end of third grade. Next, inclusion for all students is essential to these efforts. We are creating a space where every student, no matter their grade level, interests, race, gender, ability level, will feel included and like they belong. Finally, this plan was developed through intentional input from stakeholders across our city. We led multiple meetings, gathered input, reviewed that again with various teams that had direct input on what this plan will look like. It was critical to make sure we collaborated with all members of our CSD community. As we moved through this plan, we also identified some non-negotiables. So the non-negotiables that will benchmark our success is that all students will be skilled readers by the end of third grade, every school environment will be inclusive, every student will be safe, seen, and successful, and every student will have a high-quality learning experience because every teacher in our school system is a great teacher. So first, I want to dig into our why. So why do we have to have a plan? We haven't had a strategic plan in City Schools of Decatur for many, many years, and it's important to have a plan so we can align all of our work, and so everything is intentional, and it's not just intermittent professional development opportunities or not-aligned systems of support for our students. So it was very important to have this plan, but also so that we can focus on what's essential for our school system. We know that on the heels of COVID, of the COVID pandemic, along with a rapidly evolving landscape of the 21st century, it's crucial to seize this opportunity to reshape our schools to meet the needs of each learner while supporting their social, emotional, and cognitive needs. As I've mentioned previously, this plan was developed through inclusive, intentional and inclusive engagement from our stakeholders, specifically centering on historically marginalized voices throughout this process. Our school and district leadership helped lead these holistic and intentionally inclusive efforts. As we developed this plan, we held three core beliefs at the center of what we want to see in this plan, and first was whole learner development. City Schools of Decatur is committed to ensuring the social, emotional, cognitive growth, and mental health of each student. We also believe that our schools must unearth the gifts and talents of our students while adjusting to the needs of our students rather than forcing our students to adjust to our system. We also held no learner marginalized. When we say all, we mean all with a deliberate focus on investing in our students of color who have been historically marginalized. CSD will serve as a national model for anti-marginalization and systemic equity. Finally, we put at the center of being future-driven. We recognize that our current school model was built by people a long, long time ago, and that model is outdated and needs to be changed. We will continually ask, are we preparing students for their future? This is a brief timeline of how this process went through. I'm not going to dig into this. I think we've talked about this timeline lots and lots and lots over the past years. So I want to focus on our how. How are we going to get this work done? We've got some big audacious ideas. How are we going to focus our work? And we have identified strategic accelerators. So these were in the initial phases called our goal areas. And the goal areas, we were initially developed five. Equity was a separate goal initiative, and we felt strongly as a team that needed to be part of what we do in every single initiative. And really, instead of these as initiatives, these are accelerators that will help us move the work forward. So to achieve our ambitious outcomes, we've identified these accelerators, and we did these with intention of taking advantage of opportunities and the resources in our community. So the four strategic accelerators that we've identified, building and sustaining an engaging inclusive culture, organizational effectiveness and excellence, cultivating and retaining quality professionals, and all of those three things will lead to student success in all So I'm going to go through it a little bit more detail, what each of these six accelerators will encompass. So for each accelerator, we've identified an initiative, and they're all about the CSD experience. So for building an engaging and inclusive culture, we are focusing on the CSD cultural experience with connections, culture, and community. The purpose of this is to ensure that CSD has the systems and resources in place so that all members in our community report having a sense of belonging that ignites passion for learning and contributing to the achievement of CSD's vision and mission, feeling safe, valued, and heard in all CSD settings and locations, experiencing a positive culture and climate that values students, families, staff, and community partners, having equitable access to extracurricular activities, clubs, and after-school care opportunities, and also by being well-informed and knowledgeable at CSD processes and procedures. See, we know we're working on communication. We're doing it. We're trying. The outcomes by implementing this initiative and using the strategic accelerator, we will achieve our priority student outcomes, which I will touch on next, will amplify student voice and intentionally engage those marginalized voices, foster rich connections with stakeholders, expand and diversify our access and offerings of athletics, extracurriculars, and clubs, maximizing the partnerships with our community to make sure that those extracurriculars are affordable, and also employ a functional database so that when we assess and implement, we are monitoring the fidelity of what we're doing. So our second accelerator, organizational effectiveness and excellence, and nice shout-out to our school social workers there. So this initiative, we're calling the CSD Sustainable Experience for the Future-Ready Classroom. The purpose of this initiative is to make sure that we have the systems, processes, and resources in place so that every classroom, common space, office, safe, and facility is safe and healthy, is universally accessible for every member of our community, eco-friendly and sustainable, fully equipped with modern technology, and designed for students to actively engage in learning as well as being financially sustainable. The outcomes that we hope to achieve, of course, are our priorities. But we will provide a future-ready classroom while reducing the environmental burden on our environment. We will create and sustain excellence and transparency in financial operations and decisions, ensure every student and employee has equitable access to technology resources, monitor and implement an environmentally friendly, long-range facility plan, and enhance safe and universally accessible learning environment. Next, cultivating and retaining our quality professionals. The purpose, the initiative for this one is the CSD staff experience from hire to retire. We want to take care and value our staff members from the moment they walk into our school system and start engaging with our students to the time they hopefully decide to retire, hopefully after 30 years or a full career in our system. The purpose here is that we have the systems, processes, and resources in place so that all CSD staff are actively and meaningfully engaged in working towards the success of our vision and mission, represented equitably at all levels of our organization, provided the training, coaching, and resources to be highly effective in their current role, and opportunities for advancement. We want to make sure that they are compensated at a competitive level, celebrated for their success, and highly satisfied in their roles. The outcomes that we hope to achieve in addition to our priority student outcomes are that we want to be nationally known as the premier district where all staff thrive. We will constantly and consistently use equitable hiring practices to attract and retain a diverse human capital, addressing relevant and appropriate professional currencies, and prioritizing and investing in anti-racist, relevant professional learning so that we can create and sustain a pervasive equity-focused culture that eliminates bias and racism in all of our spaces. The final one is student success in all areas, and this is the student experience to preparing to lead a better world. The purpose for this one is to make sure that we have the systems, processes, and resources in place so that all students are prepared to successfully take the next step in their life journey at any time during their time with us in CSD or after graduation. We also want our students to be aware of the importance of civic engagement and cultural humility, reaching the highest academic achievement level that they're eager to attend school, and they're able to thrive and find joy in our learning environment. By implementing this, of course, we will achieve our priority student outcomes, but we will also provide and deliver an engaging curriculum through quality instruction and equity, increase the mastery of our standards-based, standards-plus curriculum, provide relevant and meaningful assessments, embed college and career preparedness in diverse ways, and increase student wellness. So I wanted to take a little bit of time and dig deeper into these strategic accelerators. So those are just high-level overviews, and with each of those, we have a massive sheet for each of those that's outlining all the different implementation steps. And I want to point out, and I'll talk a little bit later about this, what we're going to do each year. So we've calendared out kind of how we're going to go through the implementation stages for each of these components, and you'll see that each one has a design, discover, design, deliver, and double back. And I'll explain what those mean in a little bit. But this is available for public review, so people can see we have these big goals, we have these big action steps. How are we going to implement the work behind these? So we've got one for retaining quality professionals, operational excellence, and then also student success in all areas. So I previewed a couple times our what, and these are our priority student outcomes. So priority student outcomes are high-level outcomes crafted to intentionally keep our focus on our students, which is the main purpose that we are here in CSD. It's what we do, it's why we're here. For both of these priority student outcomes, we have developed additional incremental goals for our system to achieve that will build on each other so we can achieve those priority student outcomes. Our first outcome is that we will cultivate, and we will cultivate scholars to become leaders who live healthy, self-sufficient lives, that are lifelong learners, participate in productive civic engagement, and feel fulfilled in their careers. Our second priority outcome is that we will improve opportunities, access, classroom environment, so all scholars can achieve high academic results, equitable representation in advanced courses, and equitable discipline outcomes. And just like with our strategic accelerators, we have mapped out our work. We've also identified our measurement tool and designed how we are going to roll out delivery in all of these. So this is also going to be linked on our webpage so parents can review these priority student outcomes. So I mentioned about implementation, so I do want to talk through a little bit on the So we know that the successful implementation of such a big plan will take our whole community, and we are using the idea of learn, teach, and lead so that every community member can be engaged. And the Diflexia Task Force is a really great example of how we brought in our parents to help us learn about what we need to do and to help them be ambassadors so they can teach other people on what is happening in our schools and how we can work together. So we invested in learning about a very deliberate strategic design cycle. So to ensure that this plan works and we generate those promised student outcomes, our school leaders will follow these steps designed in Building to Impact, the Five-D Implementation Playbook for Educators. It was written by world-renowned education improvement experts Aaron Hammond, Douglas Reeves, Janet Clinton, and John Hattie, and each phase, as I'm going to outline below, has individual timelines that are based on whatever the initiative's scope is. So for example, some initiatives may need six months to go through the design phase. Some may need two weeks. It just depends on the scope of that initiative. Our managers, who will be managing and leading these, will be providing updates to the board at all of their quarterly meetings. So the first phase is discovery, and this phase, we will identify the goals for those smaller goals. So we've got to identify... So we've got to identify what is most important for us to achieve as we look at student wellness. What is the big thing we need to focus on for that, as an example? We'll build a theory of present, which means we'll understand what is happening in our schools already, what programs are there that are working, and if those are working, hey, those might be great, and we may just monitor implementation of those. But we also want to agree on what success looks like. One of the areas that I've said several times is that we want every student to be a skilled reader. Well, what is a skilled reader? How do we define what is a skilled reader? We need to have a common understanding of what a skilled reader is for everyone in our community. So we need to have a common agreement on that. Step two is the design cycle that is systematically examining different options in the design space, selecting and designing height, probability intervention, stress testing those before we launch, and developing and monitoring an evaluation plan. During this phase, we will also be very intentional about what are initiatives and programs we will stop doing. The book says that you should not implement something new without taking two things off of your teacher's plate. So we have to look at what they're already doing to decide what is more valuable than that so they can do the right work for our students. Phase three is delivery, and this is where we put our agreed-upon interventions into place. Now, we may start doing these interventions at small pilot locations. So instead of trying to deliver something district-wide, we may say, let's start with one school or one grade level to see if that intervention or that program or that curriculum resource gets the results that we want to see with our students before we implement it K five, six, twelve, K through twelve. So when appropriate, we'll use those pilot programs and then, sorry, identify what are the, are we getting those intended outcomes before we scale up? And this is the part of the plan, phase four, which I think for me is really important, is monitoring and evaluating the data that we're getting from the outcomes once we've put those plans in place. Because we need to pause and say, is this worth scaling up? Or are we not getting the intended results? And we need to go back and look at our design cycle. Did we miss a step? Do we look at implementation and are we not delivering this consistently and pervasively in the way? And again, this is why it's important for us to choose some pilot areas so that we're not trying to do this all the same time at one, in one across the district that we can really focus that support and figure out how to scale up. The last phase is double up. So that's if we get past double back and we feel like, hey, this is a great program. We are really seeing good results here. Let's do this in another grade level or another school and start scaling that up for sustainability over time to make sure that we are implementing things well across the district. So the board's theory of action explicitly states that the board will receive regular updates on the progress that we're making, and we will be providing those updates on our community-inspired, student-centered, and equity-focused plan at regular board meetings or work sections. And our reporting schedule, you can see here, is already outlined. And the last thing I want to just pull attention to, and these are small, but maybe we can zoom in on one, is at the quarterly meeting, we will take time to update our board on how we're progressing through these phases, how many steps are being implemented, where are we on those, and tracking that progress. We'll also be tracking progress on our priority student outcomes through a quick snapshot of a, what would you call this? That's the word. Dashboard, thank you, of a dashboard. And then finally, as the superintendent, we will have, make sure that every month, that every, probably week, actually, that I meet with my staff, they already have a built-in initiative tracker so that I'm following up with them and monitoring that calendar to see that they're on track, but to also make sure they're not going too fast. We don't want to roll something out. So we are ready. I want to thank the board for giving me the freedom to do this plan. I think it is a robust plan, and I think it will result in positive outcomes for all of our students. So at this time, if the board has any questions, we can discuss those now. If not, we.
I don't have any additional questions. I do want to just reference the dashboard as being really kind of the most critical thing. So to the community, to parents, to anybody that's interested in understanding it, that dashboard is the performance of the students. Let me actually say it this way. It is our performance in serving the students. That's the right way to say it. And so there's a lot of stuff here, but what it means to the kids is what it is.
I appreciate the work. Appreciate all of the members of the community who came forward to say it. I mean, sometimes we don't say these, there's a lengthy discussion about this at our work session that we did where we asked lots of questions and went into detail. The thing that stood out to me the most was hearing from the community, putting these things in writing. As a principal, as a teacher, they're in writing, here's the data, you can go to, follow it. And so it was needed, and thank you for the work.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's no other questions about it, may I have a motion to approve the CSD's five-year strategic plan?
I move to approve CSD's five-year strategic plan.
May I have a second?
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The CSD five-year strategic plan is now approved.
All right. Our next presentation is a preliminary view of our FY twenty-four budget. I'm going to ask Ms. Broome to join me at the podium and we'll go through this budget presentation. Actually, you can, or let me go ahead to the next slide while you're coming up. So just a quick viewer on what we're going to talk about. We're going to look at our budget timeline, discuss revenue and expenditure indicators, look at budget requests that came in from departments and schools, look at our general fund expenditures, talk about fund balance, also discuss the things coming down from the state for our budget. And then we will have a discussion on the board on where we are with the budget and what your parameters are as we take the next step with the budget. So this is just another view of the timeline that we have. Go to the next slide. As I mentioned, now that we have our strategic plan in place, we will always talk about how what we are doing as a school system is ensuring that we are developing the whole learner, not marginalizing any learner, and that we are focused on the future. Next slide. And then everything we do will be investing in these four strategic accelerators. So how are we investing in building and sustaining and engaging an inclusive culture? What are we doing to, or improve organizational effectiveness and excellence? How are we cultivating and sustaining those quality professionals? And then how are we increasing and improving our student success in all areas? Slide. So this is some of the data that I shared, and the board members, you have this in your packets. And yeah, you can read it pretty good up there. So I pulled some data after some conversations with parents, just to make sure we had some public data. This is pulled from our CPI report. So what I did is I looked at the last five years of our, what we submit to the state. So this is all publicly available data. And what it shows you is our classroom teacher-to-student ratio per school, so the FTEs. So we pulled this for the last five years. Tally only has four bars because they've only been open four years. And you can look at the trend of how many students per FTE, how many teachers there are per FTE of students. So if you look at, let's say, Claremont, in two thousand and nineteen, they had eleven point seven students per teacher. They are currently sitting at seven point seven students per teacher. So this is pulled based off of our CPI data and student enrollment for the review of the board. And the second slide is adminis, yes.
Well, I'll go to this next slide, and then I had a couple of questions.
The next slide shows number of administrators per student enrollment as well. So each site, each school site is a different color on this bar. Administrative sites, that is CSD Central Office, Wilson Center, and any of our maintenance departments. So you can see, over the past five years, we have waned and waxed with number of administrators. But I think what, to me, is clear is that we have, at this point, one of the higher, highest numbers of administrators per student. So we're sitting now at three hundred and eight administrators per student in the district. So just want to say that those.
The opposite of that.
Three hundred and one, three hundred and eight students, point one, per administrator in our district. So just want to say that we do watch this. We do not want to be a top-heavy organization, but there are things that we need central office staff to do so that our schools can run smoothly and have the support that they need to do things in their buildings. So these I just pulled because they are part of what we want to consider as we look at our budget, the number of class, the class size numbers, as well as how many administrators we have in our building. So these, the board, if you have any questions or comments about these.
On that question?
A couple, yes. On the first slide, the ratio of teachers to students, FTEs, I guess, by school. This is a, this is where average actually falls down a little bit. And I would be really interested in understanding the outliers and the distribution because it's not that every classroom has seven point seven, but just that the averages are that way.
Right, exactly.
And I suspect that the pain that we've heard about tonight are those outliers. Like what does a special ed class look like versus what the first, just standard first-grade class look like? And that's where I think some of these pain points are, and we should get some visibility into that. So just something around a distribution of what it looks like at each school, and in particular, where we're seeing outliers, because I think that's what's generating a lot of comments.
And I'll just note on that, Board Member Utz, is that this is, quote, teachers that are categorized as classroom teachers. So it includes EIP teachers. It includes special education teachers per billing to give you that overall average. And then when we assign our principals their staff allotment, we look at their class size, and we have that discussion with our principals, and they have autonomy to ask for additional staff.
Understood, understood.
Are, are pairs included in this number? No, no, no paraphrase.
That's determined. So say on the student administrative ratio.
Yep.
So for two point three, three hundred and eight point one, it says, the T says administrative sites.
Yeah, that's Wilson Center and Kentucky Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Where school nutrition and transportation are out of status, yeah.
So that, that actually was my, that was going to be my question on the second slide. Each bucket, we're looking at, so for example, Decatur High in fiscal year twenty-three, two hundred and five students per administrator. That is per administrator within Decatur High.
Yeah, exactly.
And then the three oh eight is the entire system versus the number, okay. And so just, I do want to point out that we are, you know, eighty administrators higher per student just from last year, which is, I think, a conversation that, that we should have about what. Now, now, some of that, just to be clear, I want to make it clear to the public, too, that doesn't mean we have eighty more people at central office than we did in fiscal year twenty-two because we also have declining enrollment and not as many students, right? So we have to be aware of that. But that ratio definitely is moving in the wrong direction.
No, it's just, it's, no, it's moving in the right direction. You want more students per administrator.
I stand corrected. Yes, that is correct. I have that inverted. All right, so. Just ignore everything I just said.
I'm thinking of correct, or remember Utz.
But so, but that, then my second point is, I think, actually, what gets hidden in that, Ben, is if we are having declining enrollment and we're still substantially increasing that particular ratio, then it means we're doing even more to drive efficiency in that particular section, right? So we have, we have more students, even though there might have been fewer students enrolled in the whole system. Does that make sense? Yeah, so if we have a slightly declining enrollment, but the ratio of the number of administrators to, the number of students to administrator is still going up, that means even though our denominator is decreasing, we are still increasing that ratio, which means we're driving even more efficiency than is seen and reflected in that particular number.
I see what you're saying.
So that makes it even better. That's the point that I'm trying to make.
Yeah, so at Glenwood, you will know that there's a big change from FY nineteen to twenty because Tally opened. And then they sat with one administrator for two years, and then we added the assistant principals.
Is there a way to look at this number? So I understand by the number of, of people, but I think it would be also interesting to look at it in terms of, and this is particularly related to Wilson Center's central office, the dollar amount per student spent on administration or overhead, right? I think that would be an interesting way to take a look at it. And that would capture the pretty substantial change that we're just discussing or describing.
Yeah, I don't know how to get that, but that's something we can look at.
Does that feel like something that we could track down in this room or feel?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'd be curious on that first, that first slide, on how we compare to other Georgia schools with that number, as well as national numbers, just to give some context. So when we have conversations with community members, we can really speak to that with some detail.
I think your average teacher would say, it doesn't feel like.
I know.
Seven point seven.
Right. I get that.
In my classroom.
That's my question about outliers.
Right. So the question is, are we putting the teachers that are in the building with the students in a way that's meaningful? So that's a question I have for how are we scheduling and assigning teachers in the building so that we don't have overwhelmed teachers with twenty-five? I think we all agree, for city schools of Decatur, twenty-five students is too many in a kindergarten class or even a second-grade class.
I mean, it also would mean if there is teachers, if there are teachers with twenty-five in a class and the average is seven point seven, for example, per class, then there are teachers with two per class, right? And so that, that, I just think there's some digging to do there.
Yeah.
And principals are empowered, they get the number, they get the staff, they divide it up, how it sees fit.
Yep.
Because they've been included in emails where it says, hey, there's a lot here.
Yeah.
Okay. You're hat, we're starting these conversations with SLTs with.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so the budgeting for the staffing process, we give the principals, hey, here's what we are projecting your enrollment is going to be. Here's the number of teachers to keep us within our parameters. What are, you know, what are your feelings on that? Do you feel like you have enough teachers there? Do you feel like you don't? Sometimes they push, and we're like, okay, let's add another teacher. Particularly our lower elementary schools that are small, it's very quick to tip between a class of seventeen and a class of, like, let's say, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because if you're dividing students between three teachers or two teachers, dividing students between two teachers, you may have to want to add a teacher if it's twenty-six and twenty-eight, and then it becomes class sizes of seventeen. So those are, those are some of the variables that we have to contend with. I mean, and, you know, investing early in our students, we know, is better because the better they are early on, the more successful they'll be later.
Any other questions?
Evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, who attend the community and colleagues. In looking at revenue and expenditures, there are certain indicators that we know will have a direct impact on the district's finances. For revenue, the state is proposing and funding a two-thousand increase to the teachers' salary schedule. This will provide the district with additional revenue. However, expenses will also increase, so the positive and negative sample to the left indicates that funds are coming in and going right back to out. Although all test teacher salary scales will increase by two thousand, the state is only funding earned certified positions. The district earns approximately four hundred and fifteen set certified positions. I projected a six percent increase in the tax digest. Last year, the increase was twelve percent, and although I do anticipate an increase, I know it will not be as large as last year. I'm waiting on information on the exemption and from the county to provide a more accurate projection on revenue from the tax digest. The green plus to the left indicates the revenue will increase. Whenever the tax digest increases, so does the amount the district is required to contribute to the QPE program. Through the local five-mil share, the red minus indicates funds will decrease. After such last month, the state budget includes an annual increase in benefits of seven thousand six hundred and twenty per employee. Certified employees' benefits will be covered by the state, so that is basically a wash. The expenditures and revenues are equal. Expenditure indicators include a six-month increase of three thousand per employee but non-certified. At the time the presentation was created, benefits were proposed to increase by five hundred per month per non-certified employee beginning January first, twenty. At the time the presentation was created, benefits were proposed to increase by five hundred per month per non-certified employee beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. We currently have about two hundred and thirty-six non-certified employees that are taking benefits through the district. The seven thousand six hundred and twenty is the annual increase for certified employees as discussed under the revenue indication. That is basically a wash, the state allocates the revenue to pay the expenses. The superintendent has proposed that all salary schedules are increased by two thousand. Any personnel and operating expenditures will also increase.
Benefits there, if I read it, that's a big broad term. Uh, we just mean the healthcare benefits are becoming more expensive. Anything else? So in this particular expenditure, if I work here, my healthcare is more expensive, but it's not changing. Thank you, state, correct? And then, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first time the state has ever said we're going to pay you more salary, correct? That's what Senator Perrin, e- every other time it's been a one-time bonus that either got taken back or whatever, at least in the last four years, right? And they stuck with that one? Okay, okay, so the second.
For this, I'm baffled by this, this healthcare expenditure increase. Um, so are we looking for this to be seven thousand roughly per employee year over year? Like a finite amount year over year, or are we looking for it, because you sent me an email about it. Are, are we looking for this to increase by percentage-wise, like according to inflation? Like it could potentially go up as, as the years go on?
It will increase by, so right now they're going to keep it at seventy-six twenty, um, but it's going to increase for us by number of employees. So this year, we've got to pay for our classified staff. The state is going to inver- reimburse us basically for certified staff. Um, so we'll look at those numbers in just a second. But then next year, we're going to have to encumber another two-thirds of our staff that we're going to have to pay that, uh, just seven thousand dollars, that seventy-six hundred dollars for.
And so for.
So over the couple of years, we'll take on the responsibility of more and more of that fund.
Non-certified to start out January twenty-four at five hundred per employee, or two fifty now they have changed it. And then the following year, it will be total seven.
And my understanding of this is that these numbers should have been increasing by small amounts year over year for years, and they just haven't done it. And so now they're basically walloping everybody kind of all at once. And then presumably also going to then hopefully start increasing it year over year so we don't get walloped again in another ten years.
Right, so that's the point, is that while it's at seven, seven, six, twenty now, in twenty twenty-five, it could be eight more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the fiscal impact of the certified indicators and their impact on revenue. Revenue will increase around eight hundred and thirty thousand for the two thousand earned certified employees. For teachers' training and experience, we average an increase of about seven hundred thousand. So the increase in certified employees' health benefits, we are anticipating about three point seven million. And with the increase in the tax digest, we anticipate that the local fair share will increase by one point two. For local revenue, the projected six percent increase equates to approximately three.
Can you remind me roughly of that six percent? How much of that is home value growth versus new digest? That ratio stays roughly, if that happens here? Okay.
He said last year was twelve.
Yes.
Might be a little forward a bit. It was nine.
Okay, this is the comparison of fiscal year twenty-three budgeted revenue with fiscal year twenty-four. Right now, we're anticipating a seven million increase in revenue if the milage rate remains at twenty-one. However, this is preliminary and subject to change. The superintendent and I review all fiscal year twenty-four general fund requests and categorize them based on the strategic initiative. Strategic initiative three, supplementing and retaining quality. Financial impact at approximately seven point two million. However, do be mindful that approximately six point six million of this amount. Increase in the increase in benefits. Students success in our areas have the second largest financial impact at three point.
I'll just clarify, every year we ask our principals and our staff, uh, department leaders to send us their budget request. Say, hey, what do you need to improve or maintain operations? So they send us all of their budget requests. Um, now that we've got our strategic plan, they have to do a very comprehensive budget request form that, um, they have to look at data, they've got to make some analyses and determine how they're going to measure success with that new budget request. Um, and then also align it to a strategic, um, a strategic accelerator. Um, so these are the, all the requests that came in, and we just wanted to capture all of those for the board for this initial presentation. That does not mean we will push through all of these budget requests.
Thank you for that clarification.
Are the, are those broken down somewhere that we've seen?
Yes, they are, I, they were in your board packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a breakdown of the budget request by personnel and operating costs. Personnel makes up ten point six million of the budget request. If you remove the salary enhancements, including staff increases, two thousand increase, the salary scale and benefits increase, personnel will decrease by approximately four million. If all fiscal year twenty-four budget requests were, were approved, this will increase expenditures by twelve million. And the new budget for fiscal year twenty-four will be right under one hundred. So assuming all of the fiscal year twenty-four budget requests are approved, the milage rate remains at twenty-one and the projected increase in revenue is accurate. This means we will need to oblige six point five million of the nine point four million in reserves, which will leave us with a fund balance of approximately two point nine million or two point eight nine percent. Can we, never mind, the next slide to answer the question. In order to have a fund balance of ten percent, revenue will need to increase by about seven million. Since state revenue is tied directly to student enrollment, local revenue is the only revenue source that we can increase or decrease. If we increase the milage rate to twenty-three point six, we will be able to earn square and maintain fund balance of ten percent. One meal is equal to one dollar a pack per one thousand of fish dead. Using the current tax digest, a meal is equivalent to two point five million.
Just to be clear again for the public, we are not proposing that we increase the milage to two point three six.
No.
Twenty-three six point six, no, not was being proposed.
Hans really wants to, but we're stopping him.
After completion of my presentation, Dr. Terman will go over the fiscal year twenty-four budget request and options for approving, uh, requests. The state's fiscal year twenty-four education budget is still under consideration. Changes have been made since February fourth, and since preparing this presentation. Some of the major changes include the security grant for fiscal year twenty-three was initially proposed for fifty thousand, increased to sixty thousand, and final approval was for fifty. This grant will give each school fifty thousand for one-time safety security.
And I'll just clarify to you, what, um, even though that is assigned per school, we will get it in one month sum and can use it as a district, um, for security purposes district-wide. So don't allot a fifty thousand per school, so we have ten schools, actually eleven with DVA, so we will, um, does DVA count as a school? So at least ten schools, so we will, um, get, we're anticipating to get about half a million dollars to enhance security.
Initially, fiscal year twenty-four salary increases for nutrition workers, bus drivers, and food nurses were proposed for five point one percent. The proposal has been revised from five point one percent increase to one thousand increase. Food nurses have been removed from the list and custodians have been added. The learning loss initially that was a proposal to provide districts with additional funding, the proposal has been removed. For the state health benefits increase, at the time I prepared this presentation, the proposal was for non-certified employees to increase in increments starting with a five hundred dollar increase for non-certified employees beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. The initial amount has been reduced to two hundred and fifty per employee per month for the first year starting in January twenty twenty-four. This means fiscal year twenty-five rates would increase by three hundred and ninety per employee per month. After fiscal year twenty-four base budget is developed, the three ninety will be, will be reflected in your multi-year budget forecast. The benefits are overstated in this presentation by approximately three hundred and fifty-four thousand, and this change will be reflected in your next budget.
Um, I have a, a couple of slides back on the budget request. Um, in personnel versus operating is there, um, a way to know how much.
Yeah, so six point six million dollars is just enhancing the pay and stats for the people we have. So that would be what, six, about four million dollars in new staff.
Okay, and I think, you know.
Propose new staff.
Okay, I think that was a, a common question or a common, um, uh, concern with how much we're going to be administrators versus teachers versus paraphrased, that sort of thing. So is there a way to disaggregate this number, uh, versus how many would be, um, administrators versus teachers versus paraphrased? Is there, is that, is there a way?
We can, going forward, we just haven't yet, because it's, we want to make sure we know what parameters we need to build the budget in.
I, I, I appreciate that. I think, I think, um, and, and again, this is just, this is just assuming what people are asking, what the cost would be, like making a shopping list. I think maybe people would appreciate knowing of what the shopping list is, how much each item would cost, if there's a way to get that.
It's not in the budget, it's in the, uh, board packet, it's all listed out, yeah. It's not a total per position, it's just that we encompass everyone's list.
Yeah, I remember that, I think, I think maybe, um, I think maybe if it was like in a, in a, in a beautiful black table. Where people could just, you know, maybe break it down and that might be what they're looking for, so.
Esten, we're going to go back to my, um, computer to the, to, to help lead the board in the next part of the discussion.
Oh, I did have a question, or probably, you probably will have this made in your next presentation, but different options. So we have the, kind of the stark option of pulling everything from our fund balance, or the stark option of increasing the milage rate. So I'm assuming maybe in future, um, meetings, we'll look at how we can maybe mix that up and what some of those different options could be as well?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so what I want to point out to the board before we begin discussion about kind of what levers we want to pull and how we want to balance this is, um, just based on the estimations, if we only, as a school system, only pass on the two thousand dollar raise to all staff and fully fund healthcare as well as give every employee a step, um, our total expenditures will exceed our expected revenue by just under a million dollars. So that means we would have to pull about a million dollars out of fund balance just to pass on the salary enhancement as well as pay for healthcare benefits, which would reduce the fund balance to eight point nine. So the discussion for the board is where your comfort level is on keeping the fund balance at a certain percent, looking at possibility of increasing, um, the milage rate, pulling back on salary enhancement to balance the budget as is. Um, so, and then obviously too, uh, right now, we still don't know, we still don't have a really good idea of what our unspent funds for FY twenty-three will be. So we will have a better indication of that, um, at the end of March. So we will be able to add some information and say, hey, some of these requests, we can fund with unspent funds from this year, so that can dissipate some of that need. So this really is a conversation for the board to discuss your comfort level and where you want to put the threshold for the fund balance and the milage rate.
Uh, go ahead, no, good luck.
I feel like I would like to quick show, please know how, how much you will have in those unspent funds. To be able to have this.
That, it's still going to be another couple of weeks. And we need to build a budget, we need, we need to have, hey, is the board set on, we want to maintain one hundred percent of ten percent fund balance? That's a non-negotiable. And we know even if we have unspent funds, we're still going to have to find a million dollars to cover, um, healthcare costs and salary enhancement.
I think that last one is a critical one. We're gonna, I mean, I think that there, we don't have much room to move over finding the money to cover those healthcare costs. Um, I think maybe in building, there's some other areas we could massage, um, but, um, that's where, if, if we had to go into the fund balance to cover that, we may, we may have to. I think the other question, like Tasha mentioned, is where is the room for us to have a combination of the fund balance versus the no rate? Um, but that, those healthcare costs, um, I think it's notable, they're substantial.
Yeah, and they're going to keep growing.
And, yeah, it, this is a quite a, quite a hit at one time, but there's, um, that's not, that's not something that we can just decide we don't want to pay.
So tonight, we need to make a just walk away from here with some parameters.
So, um, I think what would be most helpful is for definitely the board to identify what fund balance you're comfortable with for us to start next year's budget. And then we can present some opportunities for milage rate, um, options for slight increases there to cover some of the need.
I'll answer the second part first. I, I would, it would take a lot to convince me to raise the milage rate again. Um, we have a digest increasing, it's gone up, um, that would be tough. So that would be my starting position. Um, and then I would, I would follow that up with saying that there's a range for our fund balance for a reason. And one of those is, we live in a state where sometimes the state dumps the seven million dollar requirement onto our plates that we've got to make. Like we're obligated to continue to raise the quality of life for teachers, and in this instance, cover the healthcare stuff. So, um, I, I would err towards keeping the teachers whole, keeping the milage rate flat, and a tight year for adding things outside of that, given the healthcare stuff.
How do we deal with it below eight percent?
It has to be between five and fifteen. Four, four and fifteen. As long as it's in the five range, I'm okay with it. Um, I, I think that if I were explaining this budget to someone, like if this was a household budget and I was like, hey, by the way, dad's healthcare costs just went up big. We're going to dip into emergency savings for a little bit? I think that's the rational choice to make.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I'm not sure, I, because these aren't healthcare expenses that are one-time, right? These are recurrent, forever they're going to be this much more expensive and actually get worse. And so dipping into a one-time fund to cover a permanent increase makes me a tiny bit nervous. Um, I don't want to see the fund balance go much below the percentage that it's at now. I could potentially wrap my head around covering the difference in the, the nine hundred ninety-four thousand dollar difference here and holding or hewing tight. I also think that if we are going to talk about milage, that it can only be couched in terms of supporting teacher pay. But I don't think we're anywhere near digging deep enough into the budget to have a conversation about milage, right? And so when we're talking about using unspent funds from this year's budget to cover some of this, what we're saying is we're using what we over-budgeted and over-taxed to cover in this year for next year expenses, which means that we just need to be much, much stricter in this year's budget about what we're actually budgeting. And so I, I'd want to have a level of comfort that we really have dug into some of these operational numbers to extract absolutely every single possible cent from it before we're talking about, uh, anything like a, like a milage. Um, and, yeah, I realize I'm giving you a math problem that doesn't square, right? Basically, I don't want the fund balance to go any lower, I don't want milage to go up, and I want to fund all of these increases. But the, I mean, the reality is, if we're going to have a legitimate conversation with the public that might include a milage component, right now, I don't think we have the credibility to go ask for that. And, and we need to show through the cuts and the seriousness that we take in the budget, that we have exhausted every other possible avenue.
What was the, what was the lowest that we, that we got to the last couple of years after COVID?
Uh, for mil- for fund balance? I think we got down to. I wouldn't, I would do not feel comfortable recommending to the board going below seven point five. That's kind of my threshold, it's half, it's half of seven, but, um, yeah, that's kind of where I, I would not, I would make cuts before going below seven point five. I think that's a, that's a, 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 one I'm comfortable with, I just don't like getting below that.
And for, uh, Lonita, all the, the rollover, um, from last fiscal year is all. And for, uh, Lonita, all the, the rollover, um, from last fiscal year is all included in that final, fun, fund balance. So, we're seeing all of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just for context, again, we haven't agreed to any of these budgeting items, but it does include the recommendations from Dr. Wilson as well, correct?
Yeah, 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 all of those were built into this. Hey, so, we, uh, we will start building the budget. Um, I think Lonita and I will kind of come up with a, a recommendation.
We keep the rate set for the initial presentation, and we'll go from there.
Right, we have our future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, trainings, retreats. Uh, board members, are there any questions about future dates for the work of the board?
Several questions, um, I guess it's, I wasn't sure if the registration was open now for the GSBA conference.
I don't think so, no. But we need to know quickly from the board if you want to attend so that we can sign up fast.
What is the day of this?
What, what is the date?
The date, uh, it's in June, it's the first. Yeah, it's like June fourth, fifth, and sixth, or fifth, yeah, it's that first weekend in June. Whatever that first, Friday, Saturday, five, six, and I think seven.
Okay.
In Savannah, right?
In Savannah, yes.
I already have it on hold, oh, did you send it, I think there's already a hold.
Yep, Shaka sent out a hold.
Copy, copy, it's already set to be here, Paul.
Okay, something else? Thank you for joining us. What? This meeting is adjourned, we're going to return to executive session, no votes will be taken. Um, there you go, thank you all. Or reasons of personnel, like you, former chair, woman wife.
Well, Maggie, this is the, um, maybe template that the lady with the electric plus is.
Oh, great, thank you.
I just wanted to give that to you since it was just one topic.